Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Monday, April 24th School Committee Meeting to session. As a reminder, this meeting is also being held virtually in accordance with the government Massachusetts March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Members of the public can access this meeting online via Zoom. They can also access it on Area 58 on live TV, and they can also access the meeting in Meeting Room 1 at the Carver Town Hall. This time, if everybody could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with its work with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to everybody. So we'd like to start this evening with a recognition, and that's a recognition of former school committee member Jen Pratt. Jen, I don't know if you want to come up to the mic?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. You know, so we just wanted to thank Jen for her three years of service on the school committee. Jen, always impressed by your dedication and your effort and the time and energy you put into being a school committee member and all the things that you did for the community of Carver in that time. Especially this last year, I put in a yeoman's effort serving on many committees, including the Policy Subcommittee and also on the Capital L A Committee, which both of those committees this past year, as you know more than anybody, was an extensive amount of work. So personally, I'd just like to thank you for your support of our students and support of the Carver community as in your years and time as a member of the committee. And I turn it to any other of the members of the committee who'd like to say any thank yous.
Thank you for three years of lots and lots of hours of meetings, especially like the few that Scott had mentioned, but also reopening committee. We were trying to get everyone back to school through COVID. There were a lot of meetings that we were in, so I appreciate your time and your dedication to our district. So, thank you.
Don't forget the two contract negotiations.
Oh, well, that, yeah, that's true. The MOA and then, yeah, there have been a lot of meetings over the last three years, so that is for sure. I'm sure you won't know what to do with your free time now.
The last three years have in many ways been a lifetime of a school, being a school committee member.
Right? Yeah, it was definitely an intense term, that's for sure.
It was the best of times, it was the worst of times.
Right.
Thank you very much, Jen, and best of luck to you in all your endeavors. Any committee in the town would be lucky to have you.
Thank you. Absolutely. May I say something?
Well, first, I guess I'll present you with... Congratulations and thank you for your service. And I'll applaud the courtesy of the U.S. Committee.
Oh, yay! That's awesome. I did... My place of employment doesn't have a name tag for me, so I think my... I've worked there for nine years and I didn't get one of these. I took my role on school committee extremely seriously. When I ran, when I pulled papers in February of 2020, I had no idea the task that was going to loom before the school committee. But when it came, I took it head-on and honestly, I was happy that I was in that chair and able to help guide our school through a very unprecedented time. I'm proud of the time that I served. I feel like I made some key decisions. I feel like I helped implement some effective changes. I couldn't have done that without my fellow committee members because, as we all know, alone, we have no power as school committee members. We operate best as a team. And so I, as I'd like to welcome Jackie to the committee, and I just hope that the five of you continue to work together as a team and remember that even though you may not always agree, there's a common goal of doing what's best for the Carver school system, and we have to remember why we're here. We want to make the Carver school so great that nobody wants to go anywhere else, and there's still a lot of work to be done. So I just leave you with that charge and know that I won't be silent over very far. You'll still see me, I'm sure, but I appreciate all the support that I've gotten from my fellow committee members and from administration. Scott, I think you do a great job, and I appreciate all the support you gave me as a committee member as well, and Gina and everybody else. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this evening, we'd also like to welcome the new committee member, Jackie Lake, who was just elected this past weekend. And after each election, the first process the school committee goes through is a reorganization. So we'll be beginning this evening with our reorganization. And to start the organization, I would take a nomination for Chair of the Committee for the coming year. So I open to a nomination.
I will nominate Stephanie Clarity for Chair of the Carver School Committee.
I'll second.
So we have a nomination and a second for Stephanie Clarity as the Chairperson of the school committee. So at this time, any discussion? All right, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of having Stephanie Clarity as the Chairperson of the Carver School Committee?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so with that, I will turn the meeting over to Stephanie.
Thank you, Mr. Neef.
I'd be able to meet the gavel.
The gavel's fun.
I know. Well, we'll have to see, just in case. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. So the next position that we will consider is Vice Chairperson. So if someone would like to make a motion to nominate someone?
I would like to nominate Colleen as Vice Chair.
Okay. We have a nomination. Do we have a second?
I mean, I'd be willing to take a position, so I guess I can second, so.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Colleen Zanuski, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No.
No.
So with that, we need another nomination for Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Kelly Neme for Vice Chair.
Do we have a second?
I guess I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Um, no, I guess.
Okay. Do you have that, Gina?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so next, we have Recording Secretary.
I'll nominate Katie Sullivan for Recording Secretary.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So we have our positions. Now, we have a laundry list of subcommittees to appoint. So if anyone is interested in serving on a committee, I guess if you could make that known. I know I've served on policy for three years, I think, now, so I would personally prefer to stay on policy. I like Jen, want to see all of our hard work since January, December, January, through to fruition and ensure that we stay on the track of updating quarterly so we don't ever have to go through that exercise again. It was a, it was a lot of work, but it was worth it. It was worth it in the end, so. Is anyone else interested in serving on policy?
I'd be interested.
Okay, so is anyone else? I saw Kelly and Jackie are both interested. Okay. I'm trying to think.
So I think you'd have to take a formal nomination and vote yes.
Okay.
If there's multiple people interested, someone will have to make a nomination, someone will have to second it, and then we'll have to vote that nomination.
Okay.
For the two, for the two members of the committee. I think you can do the two members together.
So we would need a nomination for both members.
Okay, so I'll nominate Stephanie Clarity and Kelly Neme for the Policy Committee.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and next, that brings us to Superintendent's Evaluation.
Historically, this has been the Chair and the Vice Chair, but that...
So where's the word? Two people wanted...
So if there were two people interested in the position, someone has to make a formal nomination, like we did for the Vice Chairperson.
Right.
There was a formal nomination with a second, the committee voted. If it's an affirmative vote, then that is the group that goes forward on that Policy Subcommittee. If there was a negative vote, then you'd have to have a new nomination.
Okay.
So the way I take it is that what I, what just, recapping what just happened is, I think...
We don't get to the second if the first is unanimous.
Correct.
All right. I would prefer to keep it Chair and Vice Chair. That's my, that's my opinion.
I don't have objection.
Yeah, that's fine. I agree with that.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion to approve that, Scott, if we're all in agreement?
No, I think we should still, someone should still make a motion.
Okay. So if someone would please make a motion?
I motion that we maintain Stephanie Clarity and Kelly Neme as the Superintendent's Evaluation Team.
Oh, no. Was that, oh, was that for Superintendent?
Superintendent's Evaluation.
Superintendent, yeah. Okay, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that brings us to Capital L A, which Jen served on for us last year, which, as she and Mr. Neef mentioned, is a very big time commitment. It's really...
Yeah, especially from January through town meeting.
Yes.
So January through April, that is an extensive commitment.
It is at least once a week, if not twice a week. There's weekend meetings involved, so it's a very big... I'm just, I just want people to be aware that that is a big time commitment during those months, so that everyone's aware in case someone's interested.
Yes, so I'm interested.
Jackie's interested.
Okay.
Colleen? No, okay. So I want to check.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My only hesitation with having someone new is that, I mean, where are we now? We're in April, so I guess that would be like nine months for you to get to know the school budget.
And I've been in a couple of the meetings where I'm just getting myself familiar with it, so it wouldn't be my first time seeing it.
Right, no, I understand that completely, so, okay. So whoever would like to make a motion can make a motion.
I will nominate Jackie Lake for Capital L A Committee.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No.
All right.
So next, we have Student Advisory Committee, and we actually have our student rep here tonight, so thank you for being here with us. Hopefully, at some point during this evening, you'll feel free to chime in and share your feedback. I know we have some exciting presentations on some things that are happening at the middle high school coming up, so we'd love to hear your input at that point, if you have any to share. So Student Advisory.
I would like to remain.
Okay.
I'm still interested.
Okay. Okay. So would someone like to make a motion?
I will nominate Colleen Zanuski and Katie Sullivan for the Student Advisory Committee.
Do we have a second?
Uh, second, second.
Yep, thanks. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. It is such an important committee. I'm so thankful that we have it and that you're here with us. So thank you again for being here. I'm just, it's just great to have student voice, so. Okay, so that brings us to negotiations.
And just as a reminder for the committee, as we go into negotiations, next year, we'll be conducting negotiations with the custodians and the bus drivers. So other units are under agreement, but those two, those two will have a little more work next year. Obviously, A, the committees can be called up at any time based on...
Correct.
Things that are happening.
Correct.
But we know that we'll be entering into negotiations with custodians and bus drivers next year. And teachers historically has been the Chair and Vice Chair.
Correct. I am in favor of keeping it Chair and Vice Chair. I'm not sure what everyone else feels, but it's fine.
I'll make a motion to keep the teachers as Chair and Vice Chair.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then that brings us to ESPs. So we need two people to serve on the ESP negotiations team.
Colleen, do you want to?
Yes.
Okay. I'll nominate Colleen Zanuski and Jackie Lake for ESP negotiations.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So that brings us to custodians. As Mr. Neef mentioned, they will be in negotiations this upcoming year.
I'll stay.
You agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
You both want to stay?
Um, I think I'm going to bow out of this one.
Okay.
Because of the other stuff, but if Colleen or Jackie would be interested.
Are either of you interested?
You want food service?
Yeah.
All right, then I will stay.
Or do you want to do custodians?
I don't mind. It's really negotiations, so I don't mind.
And you're good at it.
I'm going for it, but custodians will, I'll stay.
Okay, perfect. Great. So would someone make a motion?
I will move to nominate Katie Sullivan and Colleen Zanuski to the custodians negotiation.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, that brings us to food service. So Jackie said she was interested. Is anyone else interested in serving on food service?
I mean, I'm okay staying on.
Okay.
Okay. I will nominate Colleen Zanuski and Jackie Lake for Food Service Negotiation Committee.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That brings us to Secretaries.
I'm willing to stay.
Okay. Colleen, do you want to take on one, two, a fourth negotiation committee?
If it's, I can do it if it's even for me to do it, right?
Are you... Hmm. Six. Yeah, that would give you three. I mean, I'm on one, Kelly, you're currently on one.
Okay.
Um...
Well, I don't...
Sometimes it can get to be a lot, so I'm just hesitant to have people have like three and four. I mean, because, and then some of them, sometimes they're back-to-back, so that's the only thing I would caution, is sometimes it's difficulty with scheduling. At least, we've had that issue in the past, so it's anything I would caution.
So you want food?
And Katie, what do you want? Katie's on, Katie's on there. She's on one.
I'm on, and then I, we're doing Secretaries now, which I was saying I'd stay.
You'll stay on Secretaries?
That would be too...
Okay, so...
Oh, okay, do we do, okay, so Jackie's on, we defer food service then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct. So I'm happy serving on Secretaries. I don't know what you feel, Kelly, if you're going to hop on another committee, if you're going to do bus drivers.
I would like to do bus drivers.
Okay.
I can stay there, that's fine.
Okay, so I can happily hop onto Secretaries. That way, you guys aren't weighted down. I'll be on two, and then Colleen's on three, Jackie's on two, Katie will be on two, you'll be on two, so I think that's a good distribution.
Yeah.
All right, so... Again, I shouldn't want people to have scheduling conflicts.
So on the Secretaries...
Me and Katie? You wanted to say, right?
Yep.
So Katie and I.
Okay. I will nominate Katie Sullivan and Stephanie Clarity for the Secretary Subcommittee.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then bus drivers. Would someone like to make a motion for bus drivers?
I'll make a motion for Kelly Neme to be on...
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you to everyone for serving on negotiations. We all know how important those are. So that brings us, our, 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 that brings us to Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. So...
I would like to stay. But I love diversity.
I would like to stay, but I will give it up to someone else if somebody else wants an opportunity.
Really?
Yeah.
I wanted to be on that so much last year.
I know you do.
But is anyone else interested in serving?
I would always like diversity and inclusion, but I know I'm new here, so it just, I'll put that aside.
Yeah, and what we have then in the past for this committee, where it's an advisory committee to the superintendent, so it's not an official subcommittee, so if one of our appointees haven't been able to make it, someone else has filled in for them. So there's always that opportunity as well. So...
You want to give it a...
I don't know, I know how passionate are you about it.
Inclusion, it's like what I've done in my, my career forever, so.
Okay.
All right. Works for me.
Okay, then someone needs to make a motion?
I will nominate Jackie Lake and Katie Sullivan for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That brings us to Legislative Liaison, which we really only created recently, and I would like to continue to serve. I know I haven't really had much time to do that many things yet, but there are plans, and I have a resolution that I'd like to bring forward to the committee for consideration either in May or June. So...
I nominate Stephanie Clarity for Legislative.
All right, I'll second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And that brings us to the Appointing Authority for Old Colony Regional District School Committee. So that is the Chairperson and then two members of the school committee. So is anyone interested? Would you like to stay on that committee? Is anyone else interested in joining?
Is that going to be too much?
No, it's...
You know, I mean, with everything else.
That committee, that committee only meets when either someone, someone needs to be appointed as a representative for Carver, so we have three seats on that school committee. I think we typically, when we attempted to meet earlier today, but we didn't have a quorum, so we couldn't meet, but it's not a huge time commitment. Scheduling, it can be challenging, but it's not a huge time commitment.
The last meeting lasted, what, 15 minutes?
Yeah. They're, they're pretty, they're pretty concise.
Not a big deal.
So, okay, so we have two people that would like to fill those two seats?
Yep.
Would someone make a motion?
We need three.
I, oh, sorry, three.
But one of them has to be the Chairperson.
Well, I'm default, so yeah, so I'm default anyway, so sorry, so please include me in that motion.
Okay. So I will nominate Stephanie Clarity, Colleen Zanuski, and Jackie Lake for the Old Colony Regional District School Committee.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that brings us to the end of school committee reorganization. Thank you, everyone, for your willingness to serve. I am very excited for all the amazing things that we're going to accomplish this upcoming year, as well as getting to see all of the amazing and wonderful things our students and teachers and staff accomplish. So I believe Tammy was here, correct? For comments from the A P C? I don't know if Tom has joined?
Hi, Tammy.
Hi, everyone.
Hey, Tammy. Welcome.
So I just wanted to say a few things. First of all, thanks to Jen Pratt for all of her service. Also, congratulations to Stephanie and Jackie. I also wanted to just make a note that many of us are very grateful that we have Christine Cobell continuing to work as principal at the Carver Hill High School. So making this super short and sweet, and nice coming back on vacation, so we can see what they're thinking of, and all of us are cheering up to the end of the year and all the things that go with that, and all the planning. We can't allow us to are in shock that we're, we're at that point, but I hope everyone has a good night, and thank you for this time.
Thanks, Tammy. Thank you, Tammy. Okay, and that brings us to comments from the general public, and since we are in person and on Zoom, if there is anyone that is on Zoom that would like to speak, if you could please type your name into the chat to be recognized, that would be wonderful. If there's anyone here in the room with us that would like to speak, you are more than welcome to, if you could just come up to the table. You're more than welcome to share any thoughts that you might have. All right, well, there's no motion to the microphone, and I have not seen anyone put their name in the chat.
Nothing in the chat, either.
So, okay, so we will move on. Do we have Captain's Council?
We do not have Captain's Council this evening.
I know it's tough with everyone just getting back from vacation. Everyone's, it's a, it's a tough week, so. All right, so that brings us to the approval of minutes for our April 4th, 2023 Open Session.
I move to approve the minutes from the April 24th Open Session Minutes for the Carver School Committee.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And that brings us to Communications with some very exciting news from Ron.
So we do have one official communication from the school committee this evening. We're pleased to let the community of Carver know that we have received a positive report from the auditors with no concerns or recommendations based on the end-of-the-year financial report from last year. Each member of the committee has a copy of the report in front of them, and obviously we just want to thank Ron and the staff of the financial offices for their effective management of the school district and the school district's finances. You know, it's always, it's tough to get an audit report with no recommendations, so congratulations to Ron and his team for a clean audit report.
Absolutely. I personally, being an accountant, I know how difficult that is, so I think that that deserves a round of applause, so I'm just going to start one. So thank you very much. And please send our thanks to your team as well. We appreciate all of your efforts, so thank you so much. And then that brings us to reports from the superintendent.
First is our personnel update. So we have had a few new hires since our last meeting. Dave Perone is a long-term substitute teacher in physical education at the middle high school. Brayden Boyle is a second shift custodian at the elementary school. Eliza Nantes is a bus monitor in special education for Carver Middle High School. Patricia Burke Smith is a reading intervention support specialist, ESP, at the elementary school. So those are our hires since the last time we met a couple weeks ago.
Great, thank you.
And then we're really excited about our next presentation, if you ever would be go right into it.
Yes, very excited.
So we're here to, we'd like to welcome Michelle Lilton, Sean Lyman, Julia Whalen, Cindy Sheehan, and Deanna Hyanen, if they want to come up and talk a little bit about the research they've been doing. It's called the SparkNet Salamander Research Project. This project was brought to us by Julia to the Carver Middle High School. Julia participated in the project when she was a student at Georgia State University, and, and we're glad to have the whole team here who's kind of been working on it to talk about the work they've been doing. I know it's one mic and kind of a small table.
Sorry.
I don't know, we had a bigger table, I don't know.
Yeah, we don't know what happened to it.
So we'll have to get our larger table back, but it should be...
Yeah, thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for having us.
Absolutely.
Why it's not sharing this on the screen?
Is it in a different window or something?
Yeah, there it is.
Nice.
Zoom has a whole new look. I don't know if everybody's, I don't know if everybody's been using Zoom, people using Zoom less.
Thank you.
But I logged on tonight, and it looks totally different.
It does.
It's a whole, it has a whole new look, so I'm learning, I'm learning the new look as we go, because I haven't seen it till right now. Okay.
All right, so I'm excited to share about research that we've been doing at our school, and that is called SparkNet. So it's a really long mouthful. It stands for Salamander Population and Adaptation Research Collaboration Network, and that's why we call it SparkNet. But basically, it's a regional initiative across the Northeast that allows us to research salamanders that are in the woods out behind our school. So the cool thing about salamanders in terms of education is that they're accessible to people of all ages. We have this gigantic network that we work with, lots of other universities and schools are involved. Students are participating in real hands-on research, whether it's out in the field or in the lab, and it helps to increase science literacy amongst our students. and it helps to increase science literacy amongst our students. So we first started this setup last, or actually, I guess that's two years ago, fall of 2021. We had students volunteer and get community service hours, helping to kind of clear some brush in our woods and set up these plots that you see on the screen. And the way that it works is that there are six of these plots. Each plot has 50 coverboards, and salamanders love to live and hide under those boards. So when it's time to start the research, we go out and we flip the boards to look for the salamanders. So the field protocol basically involves students going out in the spring and in the fall to find these salamanders, because that's when they're most active. They like it around 50 or 60 degrees and kind of damp. So we just finished our third official season. But students go out, they flip the boards, look for salamanders, and then we bring them into the lab. It's so cute. They are cute.
They are so cute.
That's why I'm glad I could bring it to our school. So they determine the sex of the salamander, they measure the salamander, and then they look to see if it's a salamander that we've caught before by shining a UV light on the underside of the salamander. And if they haven't been caught before, we can give them a special code that allow them to be tracked through many years. Our data ends up getting shared with the U.S. Geological Survey, so it goes to the government and they use it. And it has the possibility to be published in scientific papers down the line. This matters because students get to be trained in lab and field ecology techniques that I learned as a student when I was in college. We've certified 86 students so far in doing this stuff, and we're the only high school in the nation that's doing this project to the full extent. So it's great for all students to do hands-on science, whether they're in a science pathway and they're interested in kind of pursuing that in the future, or if they just are, you know, in the course just because they enjoy animals or ecology. Again, it's integral for the environmental and agricultural science pathway, but we have a lot of cross-pathway connections, too. So these are all the connections that we've been able to make so far, and I'm hoping that we can continue with these. So obviously, the EAS pathway has the biggest role in all of this because it's our ecology and zoology classes that are doing most of the research. We've also been able to incorporate our senior interns like Deanna. And then our biotechnology pathway, we have senior interns helping to mix the elastomer dye that we use to mark the salamanders. The manufacturing, engineering, and technology pathway, laser engraved those signs that you saw in some of our earlier slides. And even the visual and performing arts pathway, they had their digital photography students come out and take pictures of what we were doing. So it offers a lot of different interdisciplinary opportunities. And the feedback from students has been awesome. 95% of them said that it was either exciting or interesting, and 75% of them said that they would want to participate again. And this last slide, they're kind of long, so I'll just leave those up there for folks to look at. But I also want to welcome Deanna Halyanen and Sydney Sheehan to talk about their experience doing this.
Great, thank you.
Really now? Okay. Well, well, where should I start here? I guess as soon as I came back from COVID, I took kind of like a gap year. I did school at home, which was very nice, and I got a chance to realize, hey, I want to do nature stuff. I was really into Spanish before, but then I took a walk and then I changed my mind. So when I came back and I took zoology and saw that we had this whole hands-on experience with the salamanders, I was super excited because, you know, I'd go out in my backyard, I found this old moldy boot and it had a salamander under it. Big story for, for another time. But yeah, I was super excited and I'm really into like amphibians and lizards and all that sort of stuff. I volunteered at Buttonwood Park Zoo for a short time as an intern. But yeah, I learned a lot of just good general knowledge on how to find things in the wild, treat them, and just do general research. And I didn't realize that something as small as a salamander could be so important to the environment and to government research, apparently. It's crazy. And I just set up some trail cams outside and we put out dummy clay manders to see if anything decided to try and take a bite. So hopefully, we'll get some good video footage there and find some interesting stuff.
Great. Yeah, I mean, I just took zoology in my, started second semester. I haven't really been part of like the hands-on experience with this research for very long, but when I was a part of it with Ms. Whalen, she like threw me straight in. And I thought it was really interesting, like a few of my friends were grossed out about salamanders before, so I was pretty hands-on at the start, mostly because I was forced to, but partly because I wanted to. And I just, I thought it was so cool, like especially like seeing the different colors and learning that salamanders can live like the 25 years with us. So like watching them grow throughout the years, especially since we've been doing this research for so long and having the opportunity like as a high school student and not like being introduced when I'm older really has like changed my kind of path into what I wanted to do when I got into college, which I thought was really cool because it sparked some like real interest that I was interested in. Since like I know a lot of students like don't really know what they're doing in life in little high school years, but like when you find something that you're really passionate about, like the science and the discovering and all the little things that I get really nerded out about. Just really wanted to continue that with my college life, so this research has done that for me.
It's amazing.
And I also just want to acknowledge all the other science teachers that made this a success, including Michelle and Sean, who are here with us. I don't know if you guys want to say anything.
I just want to, oh, you don't have to get up. I, I, yeah, okay, that's fair. I just want to say really thank you to, to Ms. Whalen for bringing this opportunity for us. Ms. Littleton and I have been here for a while and just the development of the pathways and then being able to bring real science where the kids are contributing to, to, like you said, to research that then shared throughout the Northeast and with other researchers. So our, our little dataset becomes part of the national dataset for the species of salamanders, and we get included in all of that, and we're contributing. And to have the kids feel like they're part of that greater scientific community at a high school level is just awesome. I mean, even as a professional, for us to be able to do this is fun. I mean, afterwards, we, you know, after the kids do it, and also the collaborative nature of it, like Ms. Whalen said. So this year, my class would go out and collect them, and then we'd hand them off because we only have 60-minute periods. Her class would then tag and identify and read them. And then after school, the teachers would get together in the science department and collect the data, record it, and then go back out in the field and return them. So it really is a great collaborative effort between the department and then with the students as well. And really, thank you for bringing it because like it's not something we would have done. And it's great to work with, it's great to have diversity of our colleagues, both veteran teachers and newer teachers, because newer teachers bring new ideas and new, new things and new stuff. And working together, we get the best of both, right? And I think that's awesome. So it's been great working with Ms. Whalen to do that stuff. So that's all I wanted to say.
That's amazing.
All right.
That's amazing.
Well, thank you very much.
I don't want to completely speak on behalf of the school committee, but I think that would sound like a really good, like a little like field trip for us to go on. It would be to go and come and see that if we could like try to make that happen. I don't know if everyone else would love to do that, but I think that would be really special if we could.
It's wonderful.
Right? It's amazing. Thank you so much for bringing that to our district and to our staff and to our students. It's so exciting. Thank you for coming and sharing that with us tonight. Greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, we're excited about that work being done. And again, just emphasizing that concept of we're the only high school in America that's participating in this project. And all the other people working on this are professionals or college students. So it's just a great opportunity for, for our kids. So I appreciate, so I appreciate everybody's work on this. So thank you to everybody.
I have a question. How are they?
They left. I'm sure they'll come back and answer the question.
Like, I know, I know, right? I'm like, I'm so excited.
Like, I don't understand.
So the teachers are the ones that do this. We inject the salamanders with an elastomer dye just under their skin. So it's basically like a tattoo. And so that doesn't harm the salamander, it just stays in their body for long periods of time. And each salamander gets a specific color code with different elastomer dye that kind of gives them a name that can, we can track that salamander over many years.
Any other questions with Julia?
I'll stay here.
Yeah, like, why can't we come visit? No, I think that would be so, that's just amazing.
I will send you an email.
Awesome.
That would be great.
Yeah, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julia.
Be one of the most, one of the many amazing things that happen in our, happen in our district all the time.
So the other things that we're really excited about that happened recently, actually been happening over the last couple of months, is we, Teresa Varizano, Food Service Director, has been working with fifth-grade students and the environmental and agricultural sciences pathway students to do some farm-to-school work within the schools. So Teresa's here to give us a little presentation on what's been happening in food services, but also, and then to talk specifically about the hydroponics and the growing of lettuce at both the middle school and high school. So Teresa, thank you for being here with us this evening.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. So we have a presentation. So before we talk a little bit about our hydroponic systems, I just wanted to give you a background of how the, the food service is doing. If you go to the next slide. Thanks. Right now, the pilot program for the universal free meals is set to expire June 30th. So Governor Healey has submitted in a supplemental budget to extend the, to extend the universal free meals for another year. So we're hoping that does happen. We would be the sixth state to have that accepted if it does get accepted through the budget. And the data is showing, a lot of people say that's a lot of money, but the data is showing that every dollar that's invested in the school meal produces $2 in long-term economic impact. So it definitely gives us a return for the money that we're spending. And what does that mean for Carver? It means a, a big financial barrier for the students is removed and it increases our participation, which also translates into more revenue that comes into the schools. And we've been able to capitalize on that revenue this year, being able to purchase our hydroponic units. And I just wanted to give you an idea of where our participation stands. We were up in 22 for participation for breakfast, and we actually exceeded that for fiscal 23 so far for each month in breakfast participation. And for our lunch participation, it's the same thing. We have increased our lunch, lunch participation to 61%, which is probably one of the highest participations Carver has ever had. And a lot of that does have to do with the universal free meals. And the elementary school is about 61 lunch participation, and the middle high school is 55%. So those are, those are pretty good numbers for Carver. So our hydroponic units, we purchased eight hydroponic units from a company called Fork Farms. They're out of Wisconsin. And we have six units that we have at the middle high school that we use for production, and two of the units are used at the elementary school for the fifth graders, and it's just for being used as an educational tool for them, which is pretty exciting. The good thing about these units is it takes 98% less water than a traditional agricultural farming and 98% less light as well in land. So it actually works out to be very energy efficient also. Each unit purchased, each unit would supply us about 394 pounds of lettuce every 30 days. And so that's really based on a 12-month year. So for 10 months, we would get about 320 pounds of lettuce every month for each unit, which would, which is a lot. However, we probably use, we, we probably 70, 140, 280, about 700 pounds a month of lettuce we use right now for both schools. So if we can just rotate the way we plant our crops, we should have enough, we should be self-sustaining.
So is that 390 pounds per unit?
Per unit.
Okay.
So each unit, if we plant just lettuce, will give us 144 heads of lettuce in a small nine-square-feet space.
That's amazing.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing. And so I just put together a little video with the fifth graders putting together the units, planting, and as well as middle high school kids also help participating in the harvesting.
Great. Dramatic pause.
Dramatic pause is all based on learning the new Zoom technologies.
Nice. That's amazing. So I'm curious to know, how did you learn about Fork Farms?
I just happened to saw them, an article on them, and so I just kind of reached out. And so we're actually the first school in Massachusetts to have these units.
Amazing.
Yeah.
That is great.
It is.
Thank you so much for bringing it to our district and our students.
Thank you for doing that. I was totally amazed by how much lettuce those grew. When you walk, you walk through the elementary school, the middle high school, the cafeteria, and you walk in, you see.
Yeah.
Is it possible to grow other vegetables?
Yeah, so we grew basil. We're going to experiment a little next year. I know the fifth graders are very excited about experimenting. Some want to grow pumpkins. Well, we'll save the bottom rows for the pumpkins, and we'll do some tomatoes. So the good thing with that is I'll let the fifth graders experiment. They can let me know what works.
Oh, that's fun.
Yeah. And you can do herbs and stuff, so yeah.
That's amazing. Thank you so very much.
Thank you for all your work on this. It's outstanding.
I love it.
Thank you. Now I want a salad. It looks, every time I go and I see it grow bigger, it just, it looks so delicious every time I happen to, to be there. Thank you so very much. See, another amazing program and opportunity for our district.
Yep, absolutely.
Incredible. Okay, so that brings us to recommendations from the superintendent.
So the first one is for the Reed's Board of Directors. As a member of the Reed's Collaborative, the school committee has to appoint someone to serve on the Board of Directors for Reed's Academy. Historically, the superintendent has served on the board. I would be glad to continue my role on the Reed Board of Directors and would entertain a motion to that extent. It's obviously something I've done since I've been superintendent, but we do need to officially, the school committee does officially need to appoint me to be a member of the board.
I move that we appoint Scott Neef, Superintendent of the Carver Public Schools, as the Carver School Committee's representative on the Reed's Board of Directors.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Neef, for continuing to serve as the representative for the Reed's Board of Directors.
All right, thank you.
And then that brings us to financial updates and FY '23 budget transfers.
I'll turn the mic over to Ron.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Your monthly financial update has just a couple of quick items. Nothing really from Washington, but a couple of things on Beacon Hill as FY '24 starts. Nothing really from Washington, but a couple of things on Beacon Hill as FY24 starts to make its way through the various committees. So I'm sure you saw House Ways and Means release their FY24 budget. I linked it over there if you want to peruse. Their proposal is similar to the governor's in a lot of ways. There's a couple of differences, but for the most part, they have some of the major concepts in lockstep. I've highlighted a couple of the slight differences they have. The first is Ways and Means proposal does include an additional $30 per pupil, an additional minimum aid for Chapter 70, that's something they did in FY23 for the first time and they, it looks like they're starting a pattern to hopefully continue that, which would be wonderful for Carver as Carver is a beneficiary of minimum aid. Both of them increase homeless transportation reimbursement. There's been a pretty substantial uptick locally, not just in Carver, but throughout our region and throughout the state. So that's something that finance directors and superintendents around the state have really advocated for and were thankful that that advocacy has been heard at a state level or hopeful that's going to be part of the FY24 final budget package. As Teresa mentioned, the Ways and Means adds an appropriation to cover that statewide free lunch program, which is phenomenal. Just as an aside, you may remember, oh no. There you go. Just as an aside, you may remember the governor actually had a supplemental budget that she put out, which is a little bit unusual to do an FY24 supplemental budget before 24 is actually built. Anyway, I think that was just a signal to Ways and Means that this is important and Ways and Means picked it up and it's now part of their proposal. And the other item that is probably going to be up for debate as they start debate tonight actually, is going to be the way in which the state supports school districts in absorbing those increases for those 766 schools, so special education, private schools that provide services for kiddos who otherwise can't have those services provided for them in your local school district. Those are up about 14% across the Commonwealth, which is very dramatic and impacts our budget and frankly, almost every other school department's budget in the state. Anyway, there's lots of mechanisms they can explore to make that happen. Ways and Means seems to be in agreement with Desi's proposal to increase circuit breaker in some capacity and look at a difference in cost between FY23 and 24 as a way to measure that and sort of distribute funding to support school districts. So of all of them, that's probably the one that will have the greatest impact to our bottom line. We'll be keeping an eye on that for sure. Otherwise, your next page is just the beginning of quarter four. We're coming to the end of FY23. You see payroll and expenses down to the penny and I'll show you transfers as well.
Thank you.
You've got a copy of the FY23 budget. Again, every account down to the penny there. I'll give you a couple of highlights on transfers I think are relevant to you, but feel free to ask me any questions that you'd like. I mentioned that Ways and Means and the governor are both looking at increasing additional funding for supporting homeless student cases. You can see that's probably your top transfer this quarter and will likely be one of your top transfers, period. We're anticipating we've got additional homeless cases now and more on the way. So those costs are just higher than what have been projected. The rest of your costs are pretty typical this time of year. Stipends are going out for final, you know, April stipends, activities, things like stipends for additional courses and then restocking of materials across the school district. But as always, if you have any questions about any of the accounts, I'm happy to answer them now.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much for all that information and for all of the detail that you always provide to us in the background. I know some of us like to spend more time than others, but I know it's greatly appreciated by all of us, so thank you for that, Ron.
So we would need a motion and a vote to approve the budget transfers for this one.
Okay.
Motion and vote to approve the budget transfers. Acquired.
Oh, second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So one absent because Katie wasn't here, which is fine. So that brings us to school choice for 2023, 2024.
Yes, so it's that time for us, we have to make a decision prior to June 1st in terms of whether we will be continue as a school choice district next year. Last year, the committee voted to approve school choice in kindergarten in grades one and nine through 12. Grade one was an unusual circumstance for what we've done historically is because we had enrolled a smaller kindergarten that year. And, you know, so the recommendation type is going to be to maintain what we've done historically over the last, I believe, three or four years, which is to do five kindergarten slots and then in school choice in grades nine through 12, five slots in each grade level. In general, the district receives $5,000 per student who choices into the district and the district would lose approximately $5,000 for each student in from Carver who choices out. For some special education students, we receive additional monies to support their needs. We currently have 65 students who choice into the district and in the background, I listed, I put a list of, you know, what grade they're in. Last year, we opened an additional 30 slots and as a result, we enrolled 13 additional school choice students, so we didn't fill all of our slots. We tend to fill our kindergarten slots, so pretty much every year, we filled five kindergarten slots. At the high school level, what we've really seen for school choice and why I'm recommending that we keep it open is that generally, occasionally we have a student from another district enroll, but a lot of times what it is, is it's families who've lived in Carver who move and then make a decision to take advantage of that school choice slot at the high school level. And also, you know, space-wise, we have the space at the high school to take those numbers in. And really, it might only be, depending on the year, range from, you know, three to four to five students. We have, we have historically not filled our high school school choice slots, but I think it's a, it's a good option to offer those students at the high school level who may, for whatever reason, has to have their family move and then have the opportunity to stay enrolled via school choice. I do want to show those numbers. Just give me a second. I just, I said I'm learning the new Zoom setup. I want to make sure that we're sharing those at home. You know, so this is our 65 students. You can see that it's actually spread out over different grade levels, pretty fairly evenly, actually. And we do have students who, sometimes those K students stay and stay all the way through. And then also, if we have a family that enrolls at the high school level and they have a sibling who's not in high school, they also get to enroll via school choice. So sometimes that happens as well. So it is, it's just interesting that we happened to have in 11th grade, we actually have 10 school choice students in our 11th grade, but you notice none of them are new this year. We still have the five open slots remaining. We didn't fill those slots. So they have the students who have historically been school choice in the district. You know, that is a key point for this committee to consider and for the community to be aware of, that once someone's accepted via school choice, then they're allowed to remain in the district throughout their school career. They can certainly at any time choose to return to the district where they're currently living, but they also have the right to stay in Carver throughout this, throughout their career. So those are where we are. I think this is, you know, the school, I think the school committee is aware of the financial benefit that school choice has been for the district. It really has been a positive for us. You know, generally, you know, we have 65 students choicing in and generally, I don't know if we have the number, I'm looking at Gina, I think it's, I think it's eight students who are choicing out this year, but I'm not sure on that number. Generally varies. It's been fear of year five to 10 students would choice out. So we tend to be, over the last few years, you know, 50 students on the positive side in school choice. So we don't have a lot of students who are choicing out of the district, but we do have a lot of students who are choicing in. And there's clearly a financial benefit for that, which, you know, we, we supplement our budget each year with some of those school choice dollars. So I do think it's important that we look to maintain that, you know, you know, think, talking about philosophically, you know, ultimately, what, in some ways, once you are committed to school choice, you're kind of, in some ways, almost required to maintain it. Because if you cut, if you cut it off, you're cutting off that revenue source. Now that, the impact of that would happen over time. So it wouldn't happen immediately because we have all these students who enrolled school choice now would all get to stay. You know, so the 65 students we have with us would all have that option to continue to be school choice, except for our kids who are graduating, obviously. But then as we graduated students, we'd lose them off the rolls and, and that financial support the district has would, would diminish. I do think it's something that, so long-term, the recommendation is still to maintain five slots in kindergarten and five slots in grades nine through 12. And that's, that would be my recommendation and I'd be looking for a motion, a vote to support that this evening. I do think, I just wanted to make a point that, you know, I know there's been some discussion about additional housing coming into Carver and that will have some impacts. So that is something I think we're going to have to think about going into the future in terms of what we do with school choice. So I think we can go one more year and see how, what we are, where we are in terms of the timing of that project coming online. But then we would have to be considerate of that project and if it does go forward and how many, how's, how many kids it's going to add to the school district and that may negatively impact our ability to maintain school choice. And then we're going to have to really think about that in terms of the financial impacts on the school district. But at this time, the, the recommendation is to do what we've done over the last several years with five spots in kindergarten and nine through 12. And I'll take any questions anybody may have to you. Did you find that number by any chance?
I did, it's eight.
It is eight. So we have eight, we currently have eight students who are choosing out of the district versus 65 choosing in.
Great. Thank you very much for all of that very detailed information. I think it's very helpful for not only the committee to know, but for the community at large to know as well. So with that.
Is there any impact on transportation?
No, so when you, school choice, you are responsible for your own transportation. So those students who are choosing into the district, their parents are responsible to transport them. We do have a couple instances where we have some students who live right on the Carver border and their parents actually transport them to a bus stop in Carver and we provide that transportation, but from a Carver bus stop. And I believe that's only one, that's only a couple of students who are, who are in that situation. So through school choice, transportation is the responsibility of the families.
All right.
Were you asking, do we transport our residents out to different schools?
Correct. So our, our eight students who are choicing out are responsible to get to that, those schools on their own. We are not, the school district is not providing transportation for them. So I know Ron was talking a little bit about homeless transportation, the costs we have there. That's a different situation. So if a student is deemed homeless but living in Carver or laying their head in Carver as a homeless student, they have the right to get transported back to what's known as their district of origin. So if their district of origin, let's just say, happened to be Norton, we would have a responsibility to actually be transporting those students from Carver to Norton on a daily basis. And we do those things, but it sometimes becomes very challenging. Ron can speak in more detail about this if people have questions about it. Sometimes, you know, we're not able to do that transportation, so we're subbing that out, which comes at a big expense to be having, you know, private carriers doing some of that homeless transportation.
All right. Thank you for that information. Someone like to make a motion to approve?
I move that we approve five school choice slots be opened for students in kindergarten in grades nine, 10, 11, and 12 for the 2023, 2024 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, thank you for that detailed information. It is appreciated. And then that brings us to the first reading of policy sections K and L.
Okay, so we're coming to the end of our policy manual. These are our last two sections that we're going to do a first reading on this evening. We still have a couple of policies out there that we need to work on. So I'm going, my goal is to try to get those done and set up, ready for our May 15th meeting and have one more policy subcommittee meeting prior to May 15th to review those changes with then the hope of being able to finalize the whole policy manual in our meeting in June. And then we'll be able to complete, be able to complete that this year. So Lou, I know you say you need to take off on us tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it.
So in terms of K and L, K and L were really small sections with minimal changes. In many instances, we've updated our policies with the current MASC recommendations. In section L, we actually eliminated more policies than anything else. I'll outline some of the key changes here, but as I said, they were really minimal. You know, I think section L with the policies we're eliminating, I think we're going to be down to either three or four policies in that whole section. So in section K, policy KBBA, non-custodial parent rights. We actually adopted the MASC version of this policy and it's a policy that we didn't have, but in reviewing it, we thought it would be important to add to our policy manual. So that is a policy we're, we're recommending we add that we didn't currently have. Policy KBE, relations with parent booster organization, would actually replace our current policy KJA, relations with boosters organizations. So we had a couple of policies that talked about boosters and working with parents. The MASC version kind of brought those together, those concepts together under this one policy, which they call relations with parents and booster organizations. And our recommendation is to adopt the Mass Association of School Committees version of that policy. And then policy KCE, public complaints about curriculum or instruction materials. We actually recommended that this is going to be eliminated. This policy is actually redundant and is covered in a couple of policies in section I of the policy, we know they've already reviewed. So those are the major changes from section K. Section L, we're eliminating two of the policies in that area. Policy LBC, relations with homeschool. Again, this is, this policy is actually covered in section I. There's a couple of policies related to homeschools and how homeschool operates and this policy was a little bit redundant, so we're recommending that we eliminate it. And policy LBCA, sorry, LBCA, I said the words right. LBCA, relations with non-public schools, again, propose to eliminate it because this is also covered in section I of the manual. So we've really found that in K and L, there were some redundancies to things that we've already updated and adopted. There's no action that's required tonight and we'll bring these two sections back for a second reading at our next meeting in May with the goal of hopefully approving them in form. And then that would complete our, our review of the entire policy manual that we've been going through throughout this year. So any questions about sections K and L? So that would move us into the second reading of policy, section J. Policy J was a large section, but in many instances, the policy subcommittee recommends the MASC updates, which were actually mostly fairly minor language updates. You know, I really will take it to the choice of the committee, what action we take on this. We went through this last meeting. There were no specific recommendations from the committee to change anything, so people were comfortable. So I can go through everything I did last time, but I don't have to. And so if the committee wants me to defer going through each of the policies.
It's a long list. I would say defer, but I know it very well. So anyone has any?
So, and then ultimately, our recommendation would be that we would approve section J in form tonight as we reviewed at our last meeting.
Anyone have any questions about anything specific? As Mr. Neef had said, there really were fairly minor language updates. So if someone would like to make a motion to approve in form.
I move to approve section J of the policy manual in form as presented this evening.
Second?
Nice, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So close. Thank you so much. We're, we're so, I think we, I think we deserve a cake. I think, I think we deserve a cake.
At the end.
It's been a long arduous process, but one that's very important. So it's been a good exercise to go through, but like I had alluded to earlier, it's certainly not something that I hope our district ever has to go through and that in depth again. So, which is why we previously voted to have it hosted online and maintained and then we will do quarterly reviews or as policies pop up that could be beneficial to implement sooner than the policies of committee can bring them to the committee for review. Any consideration? Okay, so the first communication we have, do you want to introduce this, Scott?
Sure.
Okay, it was written in your voice, so I'm like, I don't want to.
Okay, that's, that's fine. You know, in the past, when we've had new members join the committee, we reviewed and reaffirmed what we established as the school committee protocols. These protocols were established soon after I became superintendent in 2016. We actually went through a process with MASC, so we had the field rep at that time. We actually went through a process with MASC, so we had the field rep at that time come out and work with the committee when I was first hired as the superintendent, and that's when, that's where these protocols came from, was from a retreat that that group had reviewing those protocols. So I, I would think we'd take a minute, maybe take a look at them, and if people had any suggestions or wanted to comment on any specific protocols, you know, certainly, the committee could look at these and decide to either revise or strike or edit any of the protocols, or just to reaffirm them as they currently exist. They're trying to get them back up on the screen here for... And, you know, obviously, Stephanie, I don't know if you have any additional comments?
Um, no. I think that it's a good idea for us to review and just reaffirm why we serve as Carver School Committee members on an annual basis. I think it's important for us to reaffirm that commitment, and I think it's important also for the community to know what our, you know, what our commitments are to the district. And I'm a fan of structure, so I think this will be helpful, like when we have our summer retreat to put together some goals for the upcoming school year. I think this is a good launching point, so... Does anyone want to read them? Everyone had time to read them. Okay. So again, I just want to make sure that everyone, you know, feels free to ask any questions if there are any, if there's anything that, you know, you need clarification on. We're all here to work together, so feel free to ask, you know, Mr. Neef if there are any questions, or certainly myself. And again, when we have our, our summer retreat, this is certainly something that we can discuss then, if anyone comes up with anything between now and then they'd like to add. So with that, if someone would like to make a motion? I just lost my, there it is. Just lost my, my apologies, I lost my background agenda. So if someone would like to make a motion to reaffirm the school committee protocols, that would be great.
To affirm the school committee protocols as presented this evening.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that brings us to school committee self-evaluation. This is something that I learned of when I went to the National School Board Association Annual Conference in Orlando earlier this month, and it was something I was unaware of. I learned about it from a district in New York and then learned that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees also has their own self-evaluation tool that is much lighter than about the 20-page document that I was given from New York. So this is something I wanted to share with the committee because I think it's important and would be valuable for us to review how we feel we did with the training and achieving towards the goals that we set for our committee and for our district each year. I know that, you know, our superintendent undergoes a self-evaluation process, as do our educators, so I, once I learned about it, I thought this would be something good for us to consider as a committee, so I wanted to share it and mention it tonight. And the MASC tool is linked in the background, but again, we can discuss that at our upcoming, to-be-scheduled, school committee summer retreat. So does anyone have any questions about that? I just wanted to, to give everyone some time to review it and, you know, kind of look at the document, and we can certainly work on it together, but I think it would be a great tool for us to use and for us to actually, if we can come up with a mechanism to implement it so that it remains going forward as part of the operations of the Carver School Committee. I think it would be beneficial for years to come. So that's what I would like to see happen with it. So, ah, that was my thought process. So that, with that, I will mention very briefly the school committee summer retreat. We did one last August. I felt it was really beneficial. I thought we had some really good discussions, created our goals, and this year I have some more things that I've learned from others across the state and then across the nation through MASC and SBA that I would like to see us discuss and possibly consider adopting. So I will be working to, with everyone, to schedule a date to make that happen. I am going to have some people come in and do some professional development for us, like we did last time, so I think it's a good opportunity. And at that, I'm going to also present that we do these on a trimester basis, so we can, you know, hold ourselves accountable to achieving the goals that we've set for ourselves and take a closer look at how the district is performing. So we can make sure that we're moving in the correct direction. So, those were, were my thoughts that I just wanted to share. And again, I'll look at scheduling that with everyone. I have started to work on a meeting agenda, which I will also share with everyone, so we'll have, you know, we'll have an understanding of what it's going to involve, if there's any preparation ahead of time.
Would it, would it be crazy to look at some dates tonight?
It wouldn't be crazy to me, but...
Just in terms of people's summer planning, because I know people are always looking at vacations and...
Exactly. If you met August 11th last year, I think it was like the second week in August. So, I mean, I know my vacation is the end of June. I know what, what anyone else's schedule is, but we can certainly look at, is August a okay time for everyone? Yeah. And I don't know what you have, yeah, yeah, like the first or second week?
Yeah, the first or second week in August would be better, because once we get, once we get to the third week in August, then every, then we're back full swing, getting ready for the opening of school. So my preference would be the first or second week.
If it could be on a Friday? Want to spend a Friday night with me? No, I'm just kidding. Okay. I think we, we made a Saturday last time. Right, well, was it during the week?
Yeah, we did it during the week. Yeah, we did it during the week.
We did it during the week. It was like a Thursday.
Okay. So where would that put us? I don't have a calendar directly in front of me, but where would that put us?
So, second week in August would be the 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th.
Be the same day as last year, August 11th.
Yeah, that's too funny.
August 11th would be the Friday.
So does August 11th work for everyone?
It's hard to plan. It really is. Someone has planned something for me.
Right. Okay, so why don't we tentatively schedule it then for August 11th?
And what about a time, what are you thinking for a timeframe?
We started 8:30 last time. I think we did like 8:00 or 8:30. How does everyone feel about 8:30? Is that okay? So, and I will share what I've put together so far with everyone and with you, Mr. Neef as well. We can go from there. So lots of good things to look forward to. I don't think it's going to be as fun as Salamanders, but I'm sure we'll do something fun. It's, I just love it when we have departments come and share projects that are new to our district or that they're, you know, sparking new interests and new, right, like that spark for learning in our students and in our staff. It's just, it's, it's so great. I'm so thankful for those opportunities. So thank you, Mr. Neef, for adding them to the agenda and having them present to us this evening. So with that, is there anything that anyone would like to add?
I just wanted to clarify and confirm, and I did start to look at the self-evaluation that we're evaluating us as a board.
Correct. Nope, nope. It is, it is us, and how we can be more effective, so we can look at some of the goals that we set last year and look at them and say, okay, you know, how did we perform? That's why I want to try to meet on a more regular basis, so we can really see, have we been effective enough? Have we, you know, are we striving towards really achieving that goal? So it's really just to see how we're functioning. It's not one particular individual.
Right.
I mean, I think this, this other one that is much more in-depth does have some, you know, opportunities for like individual reflection, but it's really to see how the committee feels like we're functioning and how we're performing. So, anyone have anything? So we can either do reports from the school committee, or someone can make a motion to adjourn. I will leave that in your hands.
Just wanted to mention teachers' appreciation coming up in the next couple of weeks, and we're wanting to get donations, and I know that we just put out, sign me up on Facebook if people can just go out and sign up for the things that are on those lists.
Yeah, very exciting, right? May 5th. We have so many, we have so many things coming up. It's prom. I mean, there's so many, so many amazing things on the calendar. When is our next meeting?
May 15th.
May 15th, okay, so it's prior to...
Yeah, we didn't do, we didn't do upcoming events tonight. That slipped off the agenda somehow.
We did not, but that's okay. That's, that's, that's okay. It's, you know, we're, everyone's adjusting back from vacation, right? We have prom coming up. I mean, we'll, we're meeting before convocation and graduation.
Yeah, for all those events.
Senior cookout and some of those recognitions and those types of things that we can share with everyone then. But for now, you can just go to our website, because everything is on the calendar there. So I invite you to go and look at our calendar and, you know, grab your family and go to a sporting event or go see a show. By all means, please come see our students perform in all different ways. So, would anyone like to say anything?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are officially adjourned. Thank you, everyone. It is 8:22 PM.